Good afternoon, everyone. Seems like we were just here a few minutes ago. It's been a year already since we were here to talk about the school's budget. And so tonight, we have an agenda really that has two parts to it. The first part is the recommended budget from the district. The Board did hear the presentation last week in a workshop. There were several questions from the Board that will be addressed by Dr. Kishimoto and her staff tonight. And then we'll complete the process of presenting the budget and have an opportunity for those who have signed up to ask questions about the budget as we move forward. So without any further delay, let me ask Dr. Kishimoto to begin the process.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the public. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Waring, who is Chair of the Finance Committee. I am going to provide a quick overview based on what was presented last week. Last week on Tuesday, the ninth of April, we did hand out the PowerPoint that was used that day as well as an executive summary, and that is available to the public. The entire budget is available online and has been posted for the public's viewing. So what I presented to you on April 9th last week for your review and considerations, my recommended budget for the 2013-14 school year. The budget before you continues to allocate 80 percent of our funds of all general budget revenue to the schools, continues to have about 5 percent of our funds for central office and about 15 percent for centralized services such as special education, transportation, and buildings and grounds. And so the central office and the centralized services make up 20 percent of our budget. The budget also incorporates $4.4 million of targeted Alliance District funds. That's part of the reform grant that's being proposed by the Governor. And even though the legislative session has not closed, that is assumed in our budget. I've recommended a general budget fund of $284 million, which reflects flat funding from the 2012-13 fiscal year, and a special funds budget of $130.6 million, which reflects an increase of $1.6 million from the 2012-13 fiscal year. What's important to note is that the special funds reflect decreases in all federal grants and most state grants, and additionally includes a $9.2 million increase of targeted and time-limited Alliance District grant funds. And so what we net out is $1.6 million over this current fiscal year in special funds. Our district priorities for next year and this year are focused on our strategic operating plan and our district reform framework. Because of our focus, because of our focus on student-centered learning and student-centered decision-making, we have, we have a focus on student achievement gains that have realized some important results. One is we've realized five consecutive years of performance gains, which we continue to focus on. The district has an OSI increase of three times the rate of the state during our reform period. We also have accomplished 14 schools in the goal range as compared to three in 2007. We have also increased our cohort graduation rate during this reform period by 31.6 percent. So we have significant gains in achievement during this reform period because of the targeted and strategic work of this Board and the staff of the district. We have significant continued areas of need that demand our attention and focus in this budget. The two primary areas are English Language Learner Services and increasing the special education continuum of services provided within the city limits within our schools as opposed to outplacement of students. We also need to advance the rigor of our curriculum with some important targeted work next year through common core implementation, student-centered and blended learning, which includes our college readiness work and public engagement work, which includes our parental engagement plan as well as our communications plan. Finally, we also agree that we need to ensure that our resources for school security reflect our priority for student and staff safety. And so these priorities are reflected in terms of the budget that has been presented to you. Therefore, to balance our budget in light of a flat budget, basically a flat budget environment, we've instituted four cost control strategies. First, we use a zero-based approach to budgeting, looking at each department and asking the question of what are our priorities for next year and building that budget from a zero-based budget. The second is a new transportation contract that went out to RFP and we are currently reviewing that will be in effect July 1. Third, increasing in-district special education programming and decreasing the reliance on private tuition-driven outplacements for special education programming. And fourth, looking at savings through fringe insurance. In summary, the proposed all-funds budget reflects only a 0.4 percent increase in operating dollars in special funds in the flat budget in general budget. Last week, we received two questions from the Board related to the budget that was presented. And I'm going to ask Paula Alteri, my Chief Financial Officer, to review or restate both questions and the response of our, of our research.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. So the first question that was asked last week was posed by Chairman Pollan, and it was in response to the reduction in adult education on page 236 in the budget book. And at the time, I did respond that I thought the CEE pass-throughs were not included in that could amount to the reduction in that. So I was able to confirm that. So if I look at the adult education budget, it has gone down by $305,528. The CEE pass-throughs represent $269,106. We also reduced utilities by $61,893 to reflect the cost savings that we've realized over the last several years. And actually, we actually increased our direct appropriation to the adult education program by about $25,474. The CEEs, the applications usually come out mid-April. The eligible entities will apply for that, and we will find out which entities received awards in July. So we'll bring that to the Board once those figures are known and once those entities are confirmed.
Thank you.
The second question that was asked last week that we were following up on was, I believe, asked by Mr. Waring, and that was regarding the English Language Learner Services and how much of the budget is currently allocated. So in 12-13, our current fiscal year budget, we allocate $6.9 million direct to ELL services. As Dr. Kishimoto did mention last week, we have increased that allocation for 13-14 as one of our priority areas. So the increase for 13-14 will be $9.8 million in total for a $2.9 million increase. 2.5 of that is committed from the Alliance funding and the additional $386,000 out of general funds. And those were the two questions that we had from last week.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like us to move to the public comments and public questions period.
Thank you very much. And once again, as we pointed out last week, thank you to Dr. Kishimoto and Paula Alteri and staff.
Can I ask a follow-up question to my question?
Sure.
The Alliance, where do the Alliance funds show up? Does that show up in general or in special?
Special funds.
In special funds? Okay, thanks.
So I presume, thank you. But thank you very much for creating a budget on really limited resources and addressing some of the significant imperatives that we're facing. Thanks. All right. The first question is from Greg Secord.
Thank you, and good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Greg Secord. I'm a community member of the School Governance Council at Burns Latino Studies Academy. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the Superintendent and the Board for some obvious changes and improvements in the overall performance of the district. It's exciting to hear things like graduation rates are up. That's a really promising thing. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank you for the support that you've given Burns, particularly over the last year. We're beginning to see the results of efforts of a lot of people to begin transforming the culture and academic performance of a very troubled school that has, has been in trouble for a long time. I do want to express a concern, however, that if we take a look, at least in my reconciling the budget, we're still $600,000 below our budget last year. And I'm concerned that that reduction in the budget will have a negative impact on our ability to continue the momentum of performance improvements at the school. I ask that you reconsider some of the requests by our staff at Burns, and if there's any way that I can personally not fund it, but at least support the decision-making, I'm happy to. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming forth and talking about Burns specifically. This has been a coordinated effort between the members of the School Governance Council, leadership in the community who really have stepped up and wrapped themselves around the school, the new principal, the staff there, the Board and administration working together to say, how do we ensure that we can accelerate the performance in the school? The school was receiving a grant that has now sunsetted at the end of this year. We have targeted and prioritized Alliance District dollars to Burn School as actually one of the needed schools in the district. And we've really maximized the amount of dollars going into Burn School to make sure that that budget stays as much whole as possible. There will be a couple of steps that happen after this, and I've talked to your principal about this and some back and forths that we've had. And part of it will be watching enrollment in the school. As enrollment goes down, your student-based budget allocation per student goes down as well, and that's part of the situation. But this will be an ongoing discussion about that component of it, as well as conversations that we'll begin to have in late April, early May with the State Department around whether we should be considering Burn School as a Commissioner Network school, which brings back some of the funds from the state that is sunsetting at the end of this year. That will not be, we would not be eligible for that until implementation for 14-15. So the question is, what do we do for 13-14 to protect the work that has happened there? And then transition potentially to a Commissioner's Network school in 14-15. We're very early on in the conversation. We are eligible to apply. This Board needs to be apprised of what that means also for the Board role and Board approval of that, but that's something that we are in discussions on.
Great, good to hear.
So thank you. So continue to give us feedback on.
Thanks.
Thank you, Greg. Millie Arseneagis.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Good evening. I want to talk about three areas today. Number one, I heard that there'll be a dual-language magnet school coming up. And as I, as I look, as I just heard the man that just came up here and all of the great work that they have done in that school. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that Latino Studies was a dual-language kind of component where the children learn English and Spanish. So I don't understand this, and I probably will never understand this, but I don't know what we're going to put in to the magnet, the dual-language magnet component, that we're not putting in Latino Studies? Or are we not looking at the population that's coming into Burns? Because at some point, we need to find out what is this recipe of success? And I'm not feeling that when it comes to the community schools. I feel that both the community schools are inundated with the children that need extra help because the magnet schools are capped, and they can't take enrollment throughout the year. So I will never understand that. So that's my personal thing. But I do know that five years ago, all children from Burn School were going to come out learning English and Spanish. That was the goal. So whatever we do with this dual language, please use some of that recipe over at Latino Studies. And then number two, I am looking at the family resource aides and the family service providers. And then I see the portfolio directors coming in. There's about four of them or three of them.
Six in total.
Six in total. Well, it's, it's all good. I mean, if that's, that's what we choose to do as a Board, then that's fine, or as an administration. But you have two family resource aides in the district, no different from the other family support service providers. The job description is no different. One gets paid over $30,000, and the other ones get paid in the 21s, and they've been like that for like 10 years. It just doesn't make sense, Dr. Kishimoto. So if you can look into that, there's only two left.
More, more servings, FRAs.
That is correct. And I think that they, they've served their time, and they do the same work and sometimes more. So if you can look into that, that would be great.
I will look into it.
And then third, I want to talk about cultural diversity again, because I know years ago, I asked this question in a forum, which is having cultural diversity training for teachers to have better, build better relationships with parents and vice versa. I haven't seen that yet. I've asked for several documents. I have not seen that yet. And I hope that before we choose a person from wherever to do this job, that we can involve parents in this process, because we are full of culture as parents. Maybe you can utilize some of us and pay them appropriately. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to clarify, Millie, you raised a dual-language piece.
Yes.
The dual-language school, magnet school is being proposed through the chef movement and the State Department of Education and the legislature. It's not necessarily a Hartford school, although we have injected ourselves in the conversation so that we can be considered not only in the design of it, but potentially in Hartford, and not have another school kind of designed that isn't, that really could meet some significant needs here and could be part of the research and design that will help us with the advanced English Language Learner work that we're doing. But we don't have any answers on that yet.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Millie. Anna Huertas, I got that right? Sorry.
Yes. If you can please sit down, that way you can talk into the microphone. Everyone can hear. My name is Anna Huertas. I'm actually the school and family support writer for Burns Latino Studies Academy. I have a parent here. Her name is Ruth Castro, and I have a letter from her, but also from other parents from Burns Latino Studies. My name is Ruth Castro. I am a parent from Burns Latino Studies Academy. The reason why I'm here today is to congratulate Dr. Brasi, Ms. Juan, and staff for doing a fantastic job at Burns. Ever since she came to the, as a principal at Burns, the school has changed completely in a positive way. We really appreciate everything accomplished in, in less than a year. She put all resources together for the benefits of the school. For example, math test scores went up, parent involvement went up, and Burn is the first school that is receiving training volunteer parents with Malta Benton. Again, we want to thank Dr. Brasi, Ms. Juan, staff, and the Board of Education for the support given to us for our children's success. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we appreciate the voices of parents as we do this work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Castro, very much. Yara Ramos? Nope, not coming. Okay. Larry Deutsch.
I'd like to stand so I don't have my, anyone on my back. I think it's more polite to address everyone. So in, let's see, three minutes, I have about six items to have.
Councilman, we're actually recording everything. That's why we have it set, and that way the community who's looking at the recording can also see you.
I have an idea. Watch this. Is that, how's that? Okay, in any case here, the items are these. The first one is on the positive side. I can agree, of course, that some of us are just messengers trying to represent some interests of others in the city. And so especially on City Council, that's what we're supposed to do. We all know that we have a limited budget. That's been mentioned already at least once. That applies to the city and the Board as a whole. And so the idea of flat budgeting, of course, has a certain amount of logic. And as you decided, as you described, we have to live within that. We do feel, though, representing some individuals in the city, that, that we need a good balance between the issues of decent pay for employees of the city or the school. That means, for instance, that drivers through the transportation contract, PARS and FRAs all need at least living wages. And living wages have certain definitions here in the city of Hartford, so that a family can be supported. We frown a little bit, many of us, on outsourcing and privatization where people receive wages that are fairly low without benefits. And so City Council, I think, will scrutinize the wage levels that are paid even in this new budget, budgeting. In other words, we don't want it to be at the expense of the lowest-paid workers while the system and certain contracts include bonuses for those who are higher-paid. I think that's the bottom line. And all of us in City Council, while we have our own house to clean up, also we have to look at the Board of Education and issuing the bonuses to those who really don't necessarily need them. And we've had records of that in the past. It's raised objections, and properly so. So that we urge you to look not only at the old contracts and the amount of bonuses going into those, but at any new contracts. So looking ahead to the future, they're not laden with all kinds of bonuses, whether or not that comports with so-called school reform and, and that kind of positive feedback rather than other incentives, other than unlimited budgets. We certainly agree that special ed and so on should be kept within city borders to the extent possible. That thrust, I think, was just mentioned, and we'd like to have everything kept within the city to the extent that it's reasonable. We would also say, I think, several of us, that we would like to have now as a suggestion, someone mentioned that such an item occurred on page 236 of the city budget. For some people in the city, that means having a hard copy. This is a hard copy of the city budget. It may be online, but some people just like to have the thing in their hands, old-fashioned as it may be. I think it would be proper to have a little stack of hard copy full budget right out here for those parents and others who would like to be able to read it, may not have internet access. I mentioned already outsourcing and a finally last item in terms of new construction, school building contracts, capital improvements. This is a time that many of us feel that we need to be very, very careful about physical improvements to the school buildings that result in expense either now or in years down the road for bricks and mortar, for physical improvements, while PARS, teachers, crossing arts, bus drivers have salaries that are very limited in these difficult economic times. So this is a statement that City Council will closely examine requests for capital improvements and bonuses if they occur at the expense of the lowest-paid people in the city. We'd also like to ask questions. What does the budget plan for salaries for PARS, FRAs, and so on? We'd like specific answers to that, and if I had a hard copy, maybe I could find it. I really don't know. So I think, again, this dialogue with City Council and the whole city, I hope, will continue in the next few weeks. We know it's tight, but we have to keep our priorities straight, keep people in the city and decently paid. Thanks.
Councilman Doge, I'd like to make a couple of comments, if I may. One is that we, despite the increasing cost of maintaining salaries that are somewhat competitive and are still not competitive with districts that we compete with in order to have high capacity, our contracts alone are going up by $5 million this year. We are, we are relying heavily on special funds, and we are, my staff is putting incredible effort on going after grants that align with our strategic operating plan. And it is the special fund side of the house that is been balancing this budget. And we've been working with the city and working hand-in-hand with the Mayor of the city around ensuring that for the last four years, we have not asked for additional funds from the city, knowing that there are challenges on the city side of its budget. This Board and this administration and prior administration has been working under a flat budget. And the, the cuts that have been sustained because of the flat budget have been borne by teachers who have gone out of their way and principals to make sure that our, that our schools are staffed in a way that really is student-centered and will continue to do so. We have made very tough decisions for the past four years, and I look forward to the continued conversation, not just with the Mayor, who has been hand-in-hand working with me throughout this year, but also with City Council around how we're going to prepare for what I think is going to be a very tough situation next year, when we're not going to be able to put a request again, where we're not going to be able to live with a flat budget anymore.
Through you then, simply to respond. We've gotten an inkling, for instance, last week, that the budget for text and school supplies may go down. Again, I wish I had more details at my fingertips. And so if that's the case, that means basically that some of the bonuses, even from outside sources, are going to certain well-paid salaries rather than into the text and supplies. This is simple inference. And also, sometimes when grants come, we hope they don't have a lot of strings attached, but sometimes they do.
Councilman, we don't have bonuses. We have performance pay.
I understand.
That is earned, and we, the other option, other than performance pay, would be to give my staff the increases that they all should be getting. And instead of getting those increases, they actually have to demonstrate significant achievement gains in terms of, in terms of the student accountability end of this, and so it's limited to a set of staff members. The alternative to that is to, in fact, put in place the increases that the staff deserve.
Yeah, I understand that, Superintendent, but performance bonuses, performance incentives, I've forgotten the phrase here.
Performance pay.
Performance pay, some people call bonuses, and some people think that way, and some people think the performance should be excellent and superb, no matter what the pay is, the same way as those of us here in this room, not necessarily getting paid for it, even though our performance is pretty good. So there's a question about the whole concept of performance bonuses for teachers and principals who should be dedicated to the children, no matter what they get, on the bottom line. Thanks.
Excuse me, I just have one question. I just want to make sure that I adequately communicate to this Board where Council is at on issues related to education. So my question is- So my question is, has the Education Committee of the Hartford City Council taken any official position or resolution or report with regards to the several issues that you raised tonight?
I don't think, I don't think they have yet. It's a very good question. It should be done, but many people in city council and government realize that there's only so much city council to do once it passes the bottom line. We've been told countless times, once we agree to the final figure, it's really up to the superintendent and the board. So we can express the opinion, and we can do it formally through the Education Committee and at budget time when you present, that we think money should go first and foremost into the classroom, textbooks, lies, salaries for the lowest-paid workers, and on principle, we oppose those kind of performance incentives that we think should be natural and incorporated in the whole concept of being a professional, being a teacher, a professional, a doctor, a city council person, a school board member. You should do it with or without the money.
Councilman Deutsch, I just, one thing I wanted to mention about the physical improvements, and you probably understand that we are often caught in a push-me, pull-you situation with physical improvements. So the notion that we should pay, we should be very attentive to the payment of staff people is unquestioned. I think that the superintendent and Jennifer Allen in the Office of Talent Management agree that we are not the most competitive district, and that's true of all of the salaries, not just some, but all of them. And I think that's because of an inability to pay, right? So that's one issue. The other issue is that we have schools, the community schools, Burns being one of them, that have facility problems that are catastrophic. And so to make a decision about not fixing a crumbling set of staircases in order to do something else, in order to pay for more textbooks, puts our children at risk, puts our parents at risk of falling in these places, of having some hazard occur to them that needs to be fixed. And we have a, we have a responsibility to the citizens of our city to make sure that we do what we can to fix these buildings. We have a school, the Clark School is another one, that, you know, there are fences there that you could be impaled on if you weren't careful. And these kinds of things have got to be addressed in order for us to move forward. We're all recognizing the fact that the resources are tight for everybody across the board. We get that. But there's only so much movement we can make in any given year, and, you know, the goal is to figure out a way, you know, if you get through the next fiscal year, is there a way to maneuver this in a different direction in the years that go forward? I know that that's what you're struggling with at council as well.
Good, thank you. Of course, we want the district to be safe for everyone, safe and healthy.
Right.
But sometimes you just can't afford certain capital improvements, even if it was bonding so that people have to pay for it ten or fifteen years from now. You can't just keep borrowing and bonding on new construction. That's what I address mostly, not keeping it safe, you know that. And we trust all of you to make those decisions. In terms of competitive salaries, Chairman, you can always say that. Corporations say that to justify giving multimillion-dollar salaries because they say it's competitive in the marketplace. But we, we as Hartford have to offer some other bonuses. I mean, benefits, not necessarily salary. We'll say, look, come and live in Hartford. It's a capital city. We have all these good museums and so on. Even if the salaries are not so good, come because there are other reasons. You're dedicated to the children. That's the first reason.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilman. That's the end of the public questions. Take your motion to adjourn. Is that okay? All in favor? Thank you very much. Thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you.